Welcome to the City of Daly City Recreation Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 28. For those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearances and oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the City Council Chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services and attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. This meeting is called to order.
Good evening, Recreation Commission. It's now time for, well, I guess we gotta do the flags, then we'll do the roll call.
We will start with the pledge to the flag.
Yes, sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united by the invisible of liberty and justice.
Now it's roll call time. Commissioner Nadia Flamenco unfortunately could not join us today. Commissioner Pastor.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
And Vice Chair Landos is not here, and Chair Luna.
Here.
We do have a quarrel.
At this time, I'd like to put a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
I second the motion.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Is there a motion to approve our minutes for our November 26 meeting?
I'd like to enter a motion to approve the minutes of November 26 of last year.
And I second that.
Great. And moving on to Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Luna. It is my pleasure to welcome back to you through to the Recreation Commission, the Youth Advisory Committee, for an update on all the fine things they've been doing. They've been working hard since their formation earlier in 2019, and they came before you once before last year, and here they are making a return performance. And I will let Edgardo introduce them and tell you a little bit about what they're up to.
Hello, Commission. So I believe the last time I was here, I might have came to introduce the first three members of our Youth Advisory Committee. Since then, we have seven. So you can see them there at our November meeting. Today, we do have three here, and they're gonna speak briefly about some of the things they're working on. So since we've started in, I think August was our first meeting, unofficial meeting, in September, we had our first official meeting. So they've essentially learned the process and everything that you all do on this committee, they're doing in theirs. So taking role, approving the agenda, approving last month's meetings, minutes. So they've kind of, they know this, right? You guys were, so they've kind of witnessed how this part of city government works. So it's been a learning curve for myself to get the ins and outs and all the rules involved with commissions and committees. But I am very proud of the seven. They've been working very diligently on a certain project that we are gonna present briefly today. They've been working really hard on this. They've also been working very hard on other projects outside of the committee. So I applaud them for their efforts, anything that they do moving forward. You know, I have all the confidence in their abilities, and I'm very proud of them, the ones that are here, the ones that aren't, because of other things that they do outside of this. So with that, I'm gonna have all three of them come up. They're gonna introduce themselves, tell you what school they go to, what grade. They're gonna kind of give you a brief of what they've done so far and what they're planning on doing. All right.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Patricia, and I go to Westmore High School, and I'm currently a senior.
My name is Lauren. I'm currently a junior, and I attend Crystal Springs Upland School.
Good evening. My name is Gabby, and I'm a freshman at ICA Creedway Academy.
So as members of the Daly City Youth Advisory Committee, our goal is really to reach out and to empower youth throughout Daly City, and we want to spread awareness on issues surrounding identity, mental health, and like political awareness, and just life skills in general for youth. We really wanna represent and be a voice for youth, and really just to let them know, let people, let all the youth in Daly City know that we're here for them.
So we have planned like a conference and a social fused together, and they will be able to take workshops, but also hang out with friends or get to know new people. And we really want to give them more experience for their future.
And our theme for this conference is having a 2020 vision, and our current acronym is EYES. So it's called Empowering Youth Through Experience and Skills. And we are planning on contacting various mental health services, such as the National Association of Mental Health, and we have confirmed that the San Mateo County for Financial Credit Union. Credit Union? Yeah. They're going to come in and talk to us about things like taxes and other things that you need to know when you, when you get a job.
Yeah. So along with all of these workshops, there's gonna be a balance of like skills, empowerment, just discussions around identity, and to really just connect youth from all like different schools around Daly City. And I think people can learn a lot from this experience, and even just like network a little bit and make a new friend, and yeah.
We also wanna implement like self-care as well as like life skills. It's really important, like for example, mental health, but also we wanted to like put like a yoga session in there, which I thought would be really fun, or like a meditating session for like self-care. Yeah.
Like we have, are planning on having fun workshops and also more serious topics. And if you know someone who'd like to coordinate with us too and work with us, please let us know. This is our first conference, so we're really open to any suggestions.
And we're planning this, we're planning to hold it on March 21st in the Westlake Gym slash Senior Dolger Center.
And our target audience is high schoolers, and we haven't really established if it's people only from Daly City schools, but we do know high schoolers are our target audience.
And currently, we're working on contacting organizations, just trying to sort out logistics of the conference, and we also plan to promote our conference through social media, our social media page, the Daly City YAC Youth Advisory Committee, and yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Through the chair. I commend you for the broad scope of ideas and being a sounding board for the youth in the community, and giving an opportunity to work towards this conference that you're gonna have. And again, it starts with reaching out to the community, and thanks for being the voice for them. Thanks for organizing yourselves. Welcome.
Yeah, just to follow on to that, I'm really proud to see that this is happening, and this is a really big project, and we're excited. We're here to help you in any way, like whether it's getting the word out or finding more partners that you need, we're happy to be there for you because we wanna see this succeed.
Definitely wanna give you guys a shout out. On your theme, 2020 Vision, and your acronym for IAS, I think it plays really well with, yeah, I don't know if you guys realize that, but yeah, it works really well. But it's exciting to hear that we have this opportunity for youth here in Daly City. I apologize if I missed this information, but did you guys have a date for the event yet?
March 21st.
March 21st. And I do have a couple organizations in mind that if, whenever you guys' next meeting, shoot me an email, I'll try to make it there. But I have a couple organizations in mind that I've worked with in running a conference. We actually did with the Police Department here, and our mayor at the time came in and had a youth conference, participated in our youth conference when I was at Bay Shore at the time, and this organization, PCRC Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center in San Mateo, they were really helpful in doing vigorous training for our youth to hold the workshops. Everything was a big partnership, and we got to partner up with, their network of youth all over San Mateo County is pretty strong, so that would be another good opportunity to reach out to them as well. But thank you guys for your work. I hope to make it to one of you guys' meetings soon, and again, thank you.
Just one more question. What was your social media info again?
Daly City YAC.
Yeah.
And that's where people can follow and get info? Okay, great, thank you.
Through the chair, your 2020 Vision, IAS, that again stands for?
Empowering Youth Through Experience and Skills.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty.
The future is bright in Daly City.
Absolutely, yes.
Our next item, moving right along after the Director's Report, is kind of a look back on two big highlights for our department. It came at the end, towards the end of the year, and specifically Trunk or Treat, which was by far the most overwhelmingly successful trunk or treat event we've had in the last, well, since we've been doing it, and then our Frosty Fest event right before the holiday break. And to guide you through that experience and reliving those magical moments, I introduce Mr. David Zetzer.
Hello, good evening. I will be talking about our seasonal holiday family fun events, the, like I said, the trunk or treat, the Frosty Fest, and then I'm gonna give you a preview of the upcoming Spring Fun Day as well. Trunk or Treat was held at Westlake Park this year. We had an overwhelming amount of participants. We only expected maybe 300 participants, so we only purchased enough candy for about 300 people. We ran out within maybe an hour. So it was a great attended event. The weather worked out perfect for us that day. It was a lot of fun. We had a couple of departments from Daly City included the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Water Waste Water, which helped bring our cars to more than 12. City employees participated, and then some outside community groups came forward and jumped in and participated. In this event, besides giving out candy, we do also offer alternates like toys and goodies that are not necessarily sweets. We have arts and crafts. We do a movie in the gym for overflow or for, so people can have another activity. We give out free popcorn, and then we also intersperse carnival games in between to make it a full event. It's free and open to the general public, and we're always looking for more participants, sponsors, and cars. So anybody that wants to decorate one, please let us know when the season is around. I'm gonna show you brief videos after I talk about it, so you can get a feel for the event. The 2020 event will be held on Friday, October 30th, if you wanna mark your calendars a little bit early. The activities will begin around 6:00 PM, and it will be first come, first served, or until we're out of candy, goodies, and good times. It will be held again at Westlake Park on the Water Waste Water side, and yeah. The next event that we offer in the wintertime is our Frosty Fest at the Pacelli Gym in Westlake Park. The weather wasn't too great with us this year, but it was still a very well-attended event, with over at least 200 kids and families there who braved the rain and made it in the building. We offer free hot cocoa and cookies to everybody who attends, that walks through the doors. We have an arts and crafts and cookie decorating station set up throughout the place. We try to do live sing-alongs and live performances. We have a tree lighting, free photos with Santa, and then we do have a carnival game, carnival game spread out with prizes for everybody. We also use this as a chance to collect toys and canned food. The toys for Operation Santa here in Daly City, and then the canned food, we donate into the Second Harvest Food Bank, donation bins that are located throughout the city. I do wanna thank some of the sponsors that helped give us, or some of the donations that came in from the Trader Joe's here in South City and in Daly City, as well as our help from the Boys and Girls Club, who helped obtain the bicycles that we were able to use as prizes. The Frosty Fest 2020 will be on Saturday, December 5th. The events will begin around 4:00 PM, and will be open to the general public, and then you can purchase tickets for the carnival game.
Right.
And now, looking forward into this year, we, I'm gonna show you videos from last year's Spring Fun Day to let you know what we did have. About 400 people and families were there. The Daly City Host Lions Club sponsored this event. They've been sponsoring it for a good number of years at this point. I would like to say five, but it might be more.
I think it's closer to 10. Probably 2008-ish, 2009.
Okay. Wow, I didn't, I'm sorry. They've been sponsoring it for a good amount of time. And the event wouldn't be as popular, I think, if they didn't help with it. They do make goodie bags for the first 500 participants. We have a bunny ear art station, face painting, field games, and an egg hunt. We also offer a chance to take photos with Springy, the springtime bunny. It's a, it's not my name, but it's what he got dubbed. The event is open to the general public. We do ask you to come and register in the morning, so we know how many people. We divide the kids up by age group, so that they're participating in the egg hunt and the games with kids their own size and age and skill level. Here's a video from last year's Spring Fun Day. The 2020 Spring Fun Day will be held on Saturday, April 4th. Registration begins around 10:00 AM. Activities begin around 11 with the egg hunts at their appropriate time around 12. This year, it will be held for the second time at the Pacelli Gym in Westlake Park. The event will be held rain or shine. There'll be indoor activities. If the rain is happening, we'll move most of everything indoors. So those are the family fun events that we have throughout the year that I work with. If you'd like to see more videos or less choppy ones, go visit our Facebook or Instagram, and you can see the video. Our guys do a pretty good job of posting pictures and videos of most of our events that we do. Any questions?
Well, through the chair, I just wanna share that I had a chance to drop in at the Frosty Fest, and what creativity. I think this is one of the biggest and most colorful and energetic Frosty Fests that we've had since you've been putting it on, and the creativity that was shown, especially in the prize room, where you created those bulbs out of balloons and, I guess, beer cups. Yeah.
Green solo cups.
Yeah, solo cups, green solo cups, sorry, guys. But that was very creative. So thank you very much for all the creativity. Give a big thanks to the group, David, for their hard work in putting that all together. So fantastic job, fantastic.
Thank you.
It's so great to see this, like, I mean, just having so many activities for families and kids around these seasons is really important. So congrats on having the attendance get bigger and bigger.
Signing up for a car.
Yes. Count us in. Us in.
Yeah, thank you, David, and everybody in the Recreation Department for putting this together. I also seen faces from the Youth Committee there as well, and all the volunteers, parent volunteers, thank you so much, because it's truly a whole city to put an event on like this, from the attendance to the staff, to just the vibe and the feeling when you, for the holiday feeling when you're in that, in the gym, right? It transforms it into a whole nother place, and it's clear from all the kids' faces and the videos, and awesome job. Thank you.
That's it?
Great.
Very much.
Great, so next up on our agenda, Commissioners' Reports. Any reports?
Yeah, just wanted to go back on a couple meetings. We had a young man talk about the need for a skate park here. Since then, I've been doing some research on a couple of the grants, and the big one that's an opportunity for us is the Tony Hawk Foundation Grant. I think I mentioned it before, but if you're listening out there, get your folks together. There's a lot of work to make this happen. If this is something that you and the skateboard community here in Daly City wanna do, we wanna see you guys here pretty soon. I'm not sure if we have his information or his name, so we could look back on, I could look back.
He was in the video.
Oh, was he? Oh, totally, okay, so yeah. I'd love to have him back here again and see if we could get that community out here, and we could have a conversation, figure out what to go down. And lastly, I just wanna, we have basketball games this weekend. A lot of youth is, the basketball community had a big loss this past week. Just wanna send condolences to the Bryant family and everyone that's been dealing with whatever emotions they've been feeling. I know a lot of kids that's gonna play this weekend, and it's gonna have either 8 or 24 written on their sneakers. So for the referees, the staff that's working these events, you never know, a kid may feel some sort of emotion, feel a certain type of way, feel some sadness, feel some loss. But if you're a mentor, or a coach, or referee, or a recreation staff, and you have that opportunity to make that connection, I encourage that, and that's pretty much all I gotta say.
Thank you for that. Next on our agenda, announcements.
Is that, that's it for the Commissioner's Reports?
Just wanted to say that kudos to Nathan. It couldn't have been more well expressed, being that Kobe represented recreation in his after-basketball career in terms of coaching his daughter, and it's having his Mamba Academy down there in Southern California geared to youth basketball. So well said, Nathan. Thank you.
Announcements and communications.
Sure, and also following up to Commissioner Ortiz's comment about the skateboard park, we've actually had inquiries from other folks that didn't come here.
Okay.
And we are right now at the very early stages of evaluating possible locations, and the number one contender right now is Morgate Park. I'm sure Commissioner Pastor's familiar with that. It's a fantastic site with a lot of potential, and it's just coming up with a plan and the funds, and we're optimistic that that would be a huge improvement over the former skate park, and that it's a little more accessible to the neighborhood, there's parking, and a lot more room to design.
No, seriously.
We've not forgotten.
No, for sure.
In the meantime, we certainly see a lot of skateboarders.
And I just wanna mention, like, I was looking at the requirements for the grant, and even before we even put in the application, a lot of like, things need to be checked off the list, like, for example, finding the location, like, that's one of the big ones. Like, they won't grant anything if you can't, if we can't even have that, and I'm glad we're in those conversations, so.
Hopefully, we'll be able to bring back some good news on that topic later this year. And on to announcements. Coming up on Valentine's Day, February 14th, at the Dolger Senior Center, in conjunction with Supervisor David Cannabon and the Daly City Police Department, we are presenting a special presentation for our seniors about the growing problem of romance fraud, and Valentine's Day seems to be the right time to present that. Just romance fraud sounds kinda odd, but it's a real problem out there, where seniors become victims of what they think they're developing a romantic relationship with somebody who's actually a predator, who wins the confidence of their would-be romantic partner to gain access to their assets and finances, and then clean them out and are never seen. So we're putting this on at the Dolger Senior Center. We have a lot of widows that are, and widowers there, just to alert them to the signs of potential fraud that they could, you know, avoid being victims of. Kind of a different program for us on Valentine's Day. Also, the following day, Saturday, February 15th, is our annual Black History Month celebration. It'll be taking place in Cafe Dolger at the Dolger Center. Last night, I'm happy to report that the City Council did proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in Daly City. The annual crab feed at Dolger Center is coming up the following Saturday, February 22, at the Dolger Senior Center. Doors open at noon. Tickets are going fast, so if anybody's interested in that, I would suggest calling our main office quickly during business hours, and that number is 991-8001. Skipping into March, Saturday, March 14th, the Fund Health and Safety Fair will return to the Sarmate Center from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's when we'll be launching a lot of our information about upcoming camps for the summer season of 2020. Not on your agenda, but as was mentioned earlier by our Daly City Youth Advisory Committee, on Saturday, March 21, at Pacelli Event Center, will be the Youth Empowerment. Is that the official title? official title, conference? The aforementioned conference will take place that day. And then jumping into the spring, David mentioned on Saturday, April 14th, Spring Fun, oh, there's a typo there, Saturday, April 4th, 2020, Spring Fun Day returns to Westlake Park, again in partnership with the Daly City Host Lions Club. And then rounding things off, later in spring, Saturday, April 18th, Under the Sea returns to GM Onopool from 12:30 to 2:30. And lastly, our big event over at the Senior Center in spring is our Active Adult Senior Fitness and Resource Fair. We had many hundreds of seniors taking advantage of that wonderful program last year and we expect to have another big crowd on hand this year.
Great, thank you. At this time, we'd like to open up the floor to any public comments.
My name's Alana, I'm following up. I came a couple months back and I just wanted to follow up about the need for basketball courts in the Westlake part of Daly City. So I scoped out the Pacelli Gym, I took my dog and my daughter down there every day for a week and noticed that the gym's dark in the after-school hours from three to five. There was no use of it at all. And I think that it would be amazing if we could open it up one to two days a week to an open gym so the kids could have somewhere to practice. You can charge them a couple bucks if you need to, to offset costs for staff. There's also a serious need for an outdoor court to use on the weekends and year-round. At this time, there's nowhere for them to go and it's really sad. They have nowhere to go skateboard and they have nowhere to play basketball. The local schools put up eight-foot-tall metal fences all around the school and it's a closed campus, so they are not welcome at their school. So I'm asking you to please help the kids have a safe place to hang out. I have, I've told you before, tons of kids at my house coming over to play in our backyard court, but it's not fair to all the other kids that live in the Westlake community that have no access. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I just was hoping that we could get, last time I was here, you asked for suggested locations. I mean, Westlake is ideal, if that's not, all three of my children have attended Tiny Tots in the North Ridge, I don't know what's going on with that property, but that parking lot is never used and never full. That'd be an ideal, another ideal location for a court, anywhere that they can access on foot. Right now, for them to get to March Banks is not feasible, it's too far. And there's no, there's nowhere that they can access independently. I have a 12-year-old son, he can't go across town by himself. So please help them have a place to go play, it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana.
Through the chair, I would love to respond, just because we haven't done, we haven't done stuff since we spoke last. And in fact, I was hoping for this presentation tonight, maybe next one, our engineers have actually redesigned conceptually the tennis courts at Westlake Park to include a full court, basketball court on the eastern end. Probably not going to make the tennis community happy, but we listen to your concerns and I agree, it's a shame. I disagree with the statement that there aren't places for the kids to play.
They can't walk to them.
No, there are plenty of courts on the schools, it's unfortunate that the schools are not opening their courts.
They're not budgeting, I went to the school.
And they've got their reasons and I respect that, but, so those courts traditionally have been used after school for kids. So this, this need kind of came out of nowhere because the need was fulfilled at the schools and now we're trying to, to address it sort of after the fact and kind of retro-design our park space. So I'm optimistic that that is one option. We have been open to having a small after-school open gym like we do at War Memorial.
That'd be wonderful.
It's also basketball season right now, too.
Direct practice.
Practices in all of our gyms pretty much every day and the games Friday and Saturday and so on. But when basketball season ends, that's definitely something we can address, is having a, we call it Kids Court at War Memorial, we can certainly introduce that concept, move some other activities around. But your comments did not fall on deaf ears. We jumped into action right away and the engineer who came up with the concept is really proud and I'm trying to get, they don't normally come to these kind of meetings to present, but I think it would be a nice thing for you to look at. And we also want to share with the tennis community in fairness to see what kind of feedback they might have because they're potentially could lose two tennis courts if we go forward with his concept, so.
Most of the can drive, most of the tennis community can drive to their courts.
It's like everything, there's a shortage of tennis courts, too.
Right.
So it's solving one problem and maybe creating another, but there's room for compromise hopefully within the community, so I think, I like the idea, I like the concept.
Thank you, yeah, they definitely need a place to be.
So yes, we heard your comments and we heard the skateboard comments, and yeah, there's needs in the community that we're striving to fill.
Thank you. I wanted to bring my boys with their practice.
And hopefully before your kid is in high school.
Oh, he's going, the bigger one's already out, or he's going this year. But thank you, I appreciate.
I appreciate you taking the time to come down again. It's kind of a surprise, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other additional comments or?
Nope.
Great.
We're good here.
At this time, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, this meeting's adjourned to, and our next meeting is Tuesday, February 25 at 7:00 PM.